For it.
Right, three to. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go to number 10. Consider upon a nomination to appoint a liaison to the Crime Control Prevention District Board. Let's get a, before we explain it, let's go ahead and get a motion and a second on the table, that way we can.
So moved.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I call an objection to consideration of the question based on the legality of this.
I'm sorry? Tell me again.
I am calling and I am issuing, stating an objection to consideration of the question based on this proposal being against state law, based on the, the way we have set up our Crime Control Prevention District.
Mrs. McLennan.
Mr. Brennan.
I ought to know, we've been in violation when Mr. Paul was the counsel.
Hang on, hang on.
Years.
And me.
Hang on, Mr. Brennan.
It would be good to hear from Ms. McLennan, but there, there is a question about the incompatibility of this position and the Crime Control District Board. The city council already appoints the members or membership of the, of the board, but once that board is established, it's supposed to be independent and, you know, conduct its own business, subject to a few limited approvals required by the city council. If you all were to appoint a liaison to the Crime Control District after you've already appointed the board, I don't know what the function of that person would be, but if he's in the middle as a communicator, or, or, I don't know whether he goes to the meetings and makes comments and recommendations, or, I, I don't know what it, what, what's intended here, but the fact that he is there as a representative of the city council gives him, or puts him in a position of, of being more powerful than he probably should be, and under the, the theory of incompatibility of positions and boards, I, I don't see how this could be legal, frankly.
Okay, Ms., Ms. Brennan.
Yeah, Mr. Brennan, you have been sitting here all these years, during which time council has repeatedly appointed a liaison to this commission, and you've never said anything about it before. The liaison does not participate, the liaison attends and the liaison can report back to council. That is the purpose of the position, and you've never objected to it for years, so I find that interesting.
Okay, well, if the purpose is, is stated in the ordinance, or whatever you're gonna do, that, that person is not to exercise any influence over the board, but it's just to make reports back to the board about what's happened at the last meeting, maybe there's no objection, if he's just a reporter.
Wait a minute, who was the liaison to this board?
I don't know.
Who?
There were two. Marcy Harper appointed me because I was the one who brought it for consideration to the council. She initially appointed me council liaison, and after I was no longer there, after I...
I'd like, Ms., Ms. Brennan, can I get a little latitude on this with her objection to the point of the question? Okay. I'm not sure what this person, does this person have any power? What are they, what are they gonna do?
Doesn't vote.
The person doesn't vote, he observes. Now, I don't know what Mr. Paul did, he'll have to speak to it himself.
Well, we don't want to go down that road. All, I mean, yeah, all I want to know is...
But he doesn't vote, he or she doesn't vote on anything.
Isn't there a chairman of this board?
Yep.
Who is that?
Nick Daines. Mr. Daines. Nick Daines is the current president.
Why wouldn't he be the liaison?
Because he's on the board. He's a council, isn't he a council?
Why have you not objected to it before? For years since the, since it was established, there's been a council liaison. All of a sudden, it's an issue. It's amazing to me, and Mr. Brennan's been here the whole time.
Ms. Scott.
Okay, I was a little confused, because, once again, in my packet, I was given a sheet, and I'll hold it up, it's blank. I mean, all it says is, to the beginning, it has no background, no issues, no pros, no cons, no history, no attachments, nothing. So, I called the Texas Municipal League and I asked to speak with one of their attorneys, because I wanted to know what their legal opinion would be, since they are a, a guiding factor for us on council, we can call and ask their attorneys questions. And the attorney there was very kind, and he explained to me, when you set up a CCPD, you choose one of two types of CCPDs. You either have one that consists of your city council, is your CCPD, or you set up a CCPD that is, citizens are on the CCPD. So you either have one controlled by council, or you have one not controlled by council. So, he had never heard of a position of a council liaison to a CCPD. He wasn't even sure how that would work on one that was citizen-driven, not council-driven. And if there's any liaising involved between CCPD and the council, we already have, now this was not his opinion, but this is my opinion, is that we already have a city manager, and we have the chief of police, who are more than capable of liaising, or being a liaison, between the CCPD and council, and letting us know anything we need to know from the, the Crime Control Prevention District Board. So, I was confused, I couldn't find any record of a council liaison in any of our documents or anything that is a position that's actually been created by ordinance or resolution. So, I don't understand why we need one when we have a fully functional city manager, a fully functional chief of police, who can liaise with us about our citizen-controlled Crime Control and Prevention District Board.
Thank you, Ms. McLennan. Mr. McCormick?
The whole point to the, the CCPD council is that it's an independent agency. We could choose the council membership by simply voting all of us here on the city council to be members of the CCPD council, and then select two more folks, and we'd have our seven folks. So there's not a problem with an interaction between the council and CCPD, and there's not a problem really with appointing a liaison if you think you need one. I think it's true that Chief Siemens, or whomever attends from the police department, could act as a liaison. I think it's also true that the, the city council has the obligation to oversee the CCPD to some degree. There are a lot of requirements for, for the CCC, CCPD participation in the funds that are available. So, it, it's not really all an unreasonable, it's, we, we've, obviously, in the past, we've had one, so the position was established. Whether it's useful or not is a whole nother question, and I don't really know how to answer that. If it, if it has been useful in the past, then maybe we ought to continue it. If it's not useful in the past, maybe not. Some, what do you say, Douglas? Was it useful in the past?
Well...
My question is, is it exists?
We appointed, we've appointed a, a council liaison for the past four or five years, six years, how long's it been? Twenty, 2005, when we first established it?
Okay, I'll be the dumbbell. Who did I appoint?
Sir?
Who didn't appoint? Marcy Harper appointed me.
Who did I appoint as liaison?
Frank Paul.
I did.
The, this is how it, it, actually, this is, if I recall, is how Chief Davis helped along, because I was the one that brought it to the council after it had been turned down by a previous council. He wanted me there. And he said, Anne, he said, maybe you can tell us how you think council would do on this, or think on that, or anything that you think it might be helpful. But I, I didn't have the power to vote on anything, or anything like that. I don't know how, what Mr. Paul did, I can't speak, because that, I did that for about, until I...
Mr. Brennan, does this pertain to the item on the agenda, if we ask what Mr. Paul did?
Well, I think it would be very helpful, yes.
Mr. Paul, would you step up here and please tell us what you did, since I appointed you to the board of CCPD?
Thank you. Absolutely nothing. Oh, all I did was, and I don't know why I was appointed, and I agree, I don't even know why we have the position. I was asked to do that, so I went there, I enjoyed listening, seeing what goes on. Once in a while, they may ask me a question on a personal basis, because of my financial business background, but as far as council doing anything, no, sir.
Now, the council has the only, the only thing the council is required to do is approve their budget. That's the only thing the council has the authority to do, and they have the, they have the duty to bring the budget before the city council. If the council does not approve it, that is the only place in the statute that I can find, where then the council and the Crime Control Prevention District meet in a joint session, and hammer out a budget. But other than that, otherwise than that, that's the only thing that the council has authority, a requirement, to do.
Well, why, okay, maybe I'm dumb here. Why, why would you want to do this? Why would you want to do this?
Why do you do it?
Because it was something we did before, Mr.?
There you go, and Mr. Brennan, that was objected.
He didn't.
I, I think...
Well, also, I never, I didn't even know who I appointed, and why would they do that? Do you want to get information beforehand, or what is this all about?
I think what you might want to have is somebody who's looking at it from the city's point of view. For example, when the Crime Control Prevention was started, I made a point, and the council made a point, that one item that they had to fund, and they decided to do this, every year is the police cars, that took it out of the annual budget, and they took it over. And so, you know, other than that, you may be asked a question on financial questions. I mean, I think it's an interesting thing to do, and it also sort of requires somebody to be there, to be informative on the council of what's going on. But you don't have to do it if you don't want to do it. I did it for a long time. Mr. Paul did it a long time. You don't have to do it, it's not required.
I would say, one of the things that was useful, was I attended the last CCPD meeting, and when Chief Siemens came out to make his proposal about buying radios, there was a question about where the additional $20,000 was going to come from. We're taking, I think it was 110,000 total, $90,000 coming out of the current year's budget, and $20,000 coming from the reserve. And the question was, where was the reserve? The fact is that that was CCPD funds, which had been saved from previous years, and put into a, a rolling fund that they keep every, over the years. I wouldn't have known that if I hadn't gone to the meeting, but I was able to clarify it by asking a question that helped Chief Siemens bring the point out, that it was all CCPD funds and no city funds. Wouldn't have been able to do that if I hadn't been there. On the other hand, any citizen, including council, can go to the CCPD meeting if they want to. I mean, it's, it's about as exciting as watching a nice long council meeting like this one, but you can go if you want to.
Except, except, the open meetings act would come into play if you wanted to go, and one or two people rushed in there before you, you couldn't go. You may have a lot of interest, they may just do it to block you from going. That's happened many times in the past, in other venues that we've had here.
So is this liaison exempt?
No.
No.
No, but the liaison would have, would take precedence, because the liaison would have a history, and so anybody else showing up, you could have one other person, but, from the council, but that would be it, just as you would have on the zoning commissioner, the, anything else.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If that many of us want to go to CCPD meetings, then just notice it for a potential quorum. I don't see the point. What I was given for this matter had nothing on the paper, it has no backup, it has consider and act, and there is nothing in front of me that makes me want to act on it. I see cross compatibility problems. I don't know why we continue to have agenda items that are leeching council into every facet of the city in trying to manage, or influence, or control. This is just one more item where council is trying to put something in place that tries to...
Has been in place for 15 years.
Has been in place for 15 years.
Mr. Brennan, so if we started, so if we started listing the CCPD where all the council could go, we could do that, is that correct?
I don't know, I'm, I'm never comfortable with those quorum notices. You know, when, when a council person is sitting there in quorum numbers, the perception, if nothing else is, is that the, the council is, is somehow involved in what's going on. I think the old practice of, this person would have priority, and like Ms. Winger said, the second person getting there is fine, but if it gets to be a quorum, I wouldn't do it.
Oh, you call it. Okay. Sounds like to me we need an answer on it from somebody.
Mr. Brennan's correct, it there appears to be nothing in the statute that refers to a liaison. On the other hand, there's nothing that says you can't do it if you want to. Question is, whether it's worth doing. If it's worth doing, fine, if it's not, let's not fool with it.
What was your question, on your, on your item you brought forward, with the TML? I want to hear that again.
Well, it was just opinion from TML that you either set it up using your council as your CCPD, or not using council as CCPD, using citizens, and since we were set up that way, that we might be skirting state statutes that way, because we either set it up one way or the other. So it was their opinion that if, since we have a citizen CCPD, adding council members to the mix would not probably be a great idea, and that was just their opinion from TML. So they questioned, you know, whether or not it, you know...
Mr. Brennan, no matter what council decides on this item, because of the call of the question, I'm going to ask you to, to please contact someone, the Attorney General of the State of Texas, to find out if this is legal, whether or not we can have a liaison, no matter what council moves forward on this. Thank you. Okay, we're at a voting point now.
Mr. Mayor, we need a, a vote on my objection to consideration of the question.
Okay. We have a, we have a, an item on the table for the consideration of the question. How do you vote, Mr. McCormick?
I've lost track of where you are.
She's going, we're either going to, she...
Consideration.
Consideration, yes, sir.
A means what, Mr. Mayor, and a nay means what?
If she, if you vote for it, then what would happen is it would die. If you vote against Ms. McCormick's, uh, Ms., sorry, sorry, sir, Ms., Ms. McLennan's deal, then we're moving forward with the vote. I have asked Mr. Brennan to ask the AG for an opinion on this, whether or not it's even legal or not.
It's ridiculous.
When I got a vote?
Yes, sir.
Oh, boo. I'll vote overruled, let's hear the, let's hear what the decision is.
What did you vote?
Overruled, in other words, he votes in favor of Ms. McLennan. Ms. Scott?
Um, I vote in favor of Ms. McLennan.
In favor of?
Overruled.
Overruling.
Ms. Winger?
Overrule.
Douglas?
It's majority.
Majority to overrule. All right. We're moving on. It was unanimous. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, does that mean it's effectively been pulled?
That means that it, we will, it's, to call the question, that it dies.
So it dies, so it can be brought up again?
You can table it.
Too late, already voted, we, we can bring it back, right?
It can be brought back in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's it? God, we made it. Okay, so it looks like that's it, announcements by the mayor and council members, I'm... Oh, yeah. We're going, well, the announcements were first, okay? So, on the agenda, Mr. McCormick, did you have any announcements for the, for the public?
Sure. Since the last council meeting, we took a little visit to Chavano Park with Mr. Rappley, Janne Becca, and Diane File, who I understand had some road experience. And Bill Hill, the city manager in Chavano Park, took us a nice tour around the city, and showed us their equipment, and showed us how they were doing some of the seal, and what equipment, what chemicals they were using. It was a great tour, I really appreciated it. On Friday of that week, which is, um, 10 days or so ago now, I attended the ACOG course for newly elected officials, great program, Charlie Zek gave it, and it was good to meet a lot of other city officials, and the people at ACOG, I thought were really super there. A lot of programs there that all of us could benefit from, they're generally pretty inexpensive or free, and it's worthwhile to go. This week, I accompanied the mayor and Ms. Winger with AT&amp;T and Oak Tech to look at the air defective alley repairs behind Channington, Sheffield, and Honeysuckle, and I think Mr. Herada was very effective in getting some repairs made by AT&amp;T and Oak Techs. So I think a lot of the problems that had been out there, sustained out there for the past few months, have either been fixed, or will be fixed shortly. Let's see. Yesterday, attended a meeting of the AAMPO Transportation Policy Board. This is the Alamo Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. They have an annual budget of about $200 million. They have a, a group called the Northeast Partnership, which consists of about a dozen little towns along 35 out past 1604, including Selma, Converse, Kirby, Shirts, all those little towns. They claim to be contiguous, that's to say, they butt up against each other, I'm not sure whether that's true, but they only have 155,000 residents in those dozen little towns. And that little group by itself gets one whole vote out of about 30 on the AAMPO Transportation Policy Board, decides how that $200 million is going to get spent. Now, interestingly, those same cities are members of the Greater Bear County Council of Cities, and they get a fraction of a vote from the council cities, because there are about 30 cities on the council. We get, our representation is limited to, to a fractional vote, based on what the Greater Bear County Council of Cities can do. So, it's possible, and I'd recommend that we consider whether or not we could establish a North Central Alliance of Small Towns to participate more effectively and at a greater extent in the MPO operation. It's worthwhile, it's a $200 million deal. If you don't know about it, they have a website, they have a great little video, it's only about nine minutes long, called MPO 101, telling you all about what MPO does. While I was there, I talked to Jonathan Bean, who is president of, of the Technology Review Board, and also the top text dot guy in planning. And I asked him about Honeysuckle. Plain fact from him is that Honeysuckle is still on the agenda, it hasn't been changed, the proposal to close it hasn't been dropped, they are looking at alternatives. And he said that he didn't know whether they were going to be favorable or unfavorable, or whether we'd like them or not, but Honeysuckle, closing Honeysuckle is still on the books, they haven't changed a thing, they are still considering it, and if we want to do something about it, the thing to do is to write to the engineering company, Jacobs Engineering, which we had email addresses for, and go write, write your text out, commission in, in Austin, write your legislator, write your senator. Coming up in June, late, late this month, they will be issuing RFPs, requests for proposals, to decide how to spend part of their $200 million budget. Last year, they got 20, they got 28 proposals approved out of 40 that were submitted, only 40 proposals. We got two of them, and they were for walking paths, nice, but not the big thing. We got some, some real problems with our streets, and the streets that they're interested in are our main thoroughfares. Blanco, Jackson Keller, West Avenue, Northwest Military, and Lock Hill-Selma. So those streets, they, they can do something about those streets. So we could get money for that repair that's now sought on West Avenue, if we get the right proposal in, and if we do something early. So, it'll be on their website shortly, they have a button for RFPs, I'm sure they'll put something up. So think about what we need, what we could do, how we can get some help to, to draft up a, an RFP, and put something together on it. If you need an email address for Jonathan Bean, it is jonathan.bean@text.gov. Jonathan, J-O-N-A-T-H-A-N, period, B-E-A-N, at text dot gov. He will take your emails if you don't get a response from Jacobs, or if you can't reach somebody else. So that's a place to, to go and get something done, and a potential expenditure of real money in our city, to the, to the streets that they're concerned with. We need to go and look and see what's out there, see what really needs to be done, make a good case, we're putting an RFP in, along with pictures, maybe a rough estimate is what cost would be. We don't need a, we don't need to spend $139,000 to find out it's going, what it's going to cost us to do a $700,000 job. So, something we can do bare bones, I think, and maybe get some money. I think we ought to look at all the options, put in a reasonable number of, of RFPs to get some money for our city. That's about all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Skip. Hey, Mr. Rappley and Minnie, can you make sure that you get that information from, from Skip on how to contact these people? That's real important, because not only will we put it on our website, but I'm sure, Skip, you and I will put it on our pages, on our, you know, in order to get the people to, to write in, because that's, that's a real, thank you, Skip. Ms. Scott, did you have any?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLennan?
No announcements for me either.
Thank you. Ms. Winger?
I don't have anything, I just would like to point out to Mr. McCormick that Blanco, Jackson Keller, and Lock Hill-Selma do not belong to the City of Castle Hills.
Thank you. Ms., Mr. Gregory, did you have any comments or anything to bring forward to the public, please? Nothing at this time?
None.
Well, thank you, okay. Believe it or not, the mayor didn't either. Other than thank everybody for being here, I, I went on a car trip this past week, 30 seconds only on this one, and I met some really nice people up in West Virginia, Virginia, and cities our size, and I was surprised to learn that they have some of the same problems we have, or opportunities we have. So with that said, it is now 9:59, and we are going to retire into executive session pursuant to 551-071, in parentheses, "A governmental body seeks the advice of an attorney of pending and contemplated litigation, or a settlement offer, or, in the matter of the duty of the attorney, to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules, of professional conduct, and the state bar Texas clearly, conflicts with this chapter." 1A Clements versus the City of Castle Hills. 1B, city managers update on possible legal action concerning drainage issues. 1C, address liability issues concerning a city board member, comments and actions. Number 2, pursuant in 551-074, personal matters, the city managers to brief council on the status of personal issues and consultation with the city attorney regarding liability issues, and discuss possible action. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, on item number 2, if that item is pursuant to myself, I'm asking that it be heard in public session and not in executive session.
Okay, Janet, Janet is an employee of the office here. I don't, I don't know whether it encompasses that or not, but thank you, Janet, for that. So, with that said, we are going to, it is now 10:50, uh, 9:59, and we will enter into executive session. Minnie, is there an envelope or something I'm missing up here for the executive session? Did I, did I lose it? Yeah, if you don't mind, because I don't see it up here. Thank you. Where? No, it's not. Oh, wait, 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 hang on, hang on. Not yet. What are we going to do as far as doing this executive session? Are we retiring to the room, or are we going to ask the residents to... Are we retiring to the room, or are we going to ask the residents to step out in the hallway? Probably, there's some nice couches out there, it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five...